Okay, let me know. Yes, oh, I'm so sorry. Well, that's in the script also. Because we have the Zoom audience, when you step up to the microphone, please say who you are. And they're going to be saying who they are when they start as well. Okay? Okay. Hello and welcome to the 2022 Gustavus City Council Candidate Forum. I'm Artemis Bonadia here at the Gustavus Community Center with the City Council Candidates, ready to introduce themselves and answer your questions. I'm pleased to say that this year, we're able to have a live audience here at the GCC and also be available on Zoom for anyone wanting to participate online. Nate Borson, Brian Wright, and Justin Smith are the Technical Wizard Volunteers, who are making this great sound and Zoom portion possible. Also, I'd like to thank Brittany Camomor, the GCC Operation Manager, for all the help and support she's given. She also graciously volunteered to be our timekeeper this evening. Please let these folks know how much you appreciate their efforts when you see them around town. This year, Election Day is next Tuesday, October 4. The Community Center is our polling place, and the polls are open from 7:30 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Please get out and vote. It's wonderful to have a live audience, as well as our neighbors online. Does create a bit of a challenge, making sure everyone is able to ask their question. We're going to make every effort to move back and forth between our GCC audience and our Zoom audience. Zoom Audience Members, here's some information for you. Once you're logged on to Zoom, you let us know you have a question by clicking the raised hand icon on your screen. That enters you into the Zoom queue. The first question of the evening is going to be asked by an audience member here at the GCC. After that, we will alternate between in-person and Zoom questions. Zoom folks, when it's your turn to ask your question, Nate will alert you. Please unmute your computer, say your name, who your question is for, then ask the question. And you're able to direct your question to a specific candidate or to all the candidates. We just need to know that information. If we reach a point where there are no questions from the Zoom audience, we'll take in-person questions until there is a Zoom question. We'll return to alternating any time there is one or more Zoom questions. So everyone's going to get their chance. Remember, when you hear Nate say your name or Zoom designation, unmute your computer, say your name, and who the question is for, and immediately ask your question. Now, here's a few little housekeeping pieces to pass along, how we operate here. First of all, the forum is organized and presented by community volunteers. The actual people can change each year. If you'd like to get involved, get in touch with me. We'd love to have you. We're using the city Zoom account, as there is no time limit on their category of service. So our forum will not be interrupted during the evening. The candidates are seated and will speak in the order their names appear on the voting ballot. We'll move through the candidates, so that a different person answers first on each question. This means we'll be passing a microphone back and forth between the candidates. Brian Taylor, running for seat D, is currently away from Gustavus and is joining us via Zoom. Brian, you will follow Paul Zubay in our candidate order. I'll also call on you when it's your turn to answer. Since I can't see you, do you have any questions? Okay, great. Got a thumbs up. Let's see. Shelley Owens is here tonight as a write-in candidate for seat A. I want to take just a moment to share the candidate forum's policy on write-in candidates with you all. Gustavus has a long history of write-in candidates, and the forum organizers welcome the participation of such candidates in the forum. Since there are no city ordinance concerning writing candidates, we do not receive any information about these candidates from city sources. We do think it's important to include anyone who's engaged in a writing campaign. So these candidates need to contact the forum organizers directly by the day before the scheduled forum to be included. The forum is traditionally held the Friday before the scheduled Election Day. The forum organizers do not track social media or watch for paper flyers. We do not investigate any information about a possible writing candidate. If such a candidate wants to be included, she or he must contact the forum organizers in writing, or by telephone, or by email by the day before the forum. So we're trying to include everyone that wants to be a part of our little political process here. Now, our candidate instructions. Now that we've gotten that housekeeping out of the way, we're going to move on to candidate introductions. As I said before, the candidates are seated and will speak in the order their names appear on the voting ballots. Candidates, when you hear your name, you have up to three minutes to introduce yourself. You will hear a 10-second bell warning, and you'll know that gives you enough time to wrap up wherever you are in your presentation. We'll first hear from the candidates for seat A, Brad King and Shelley Owens. Brad, take it away.
Hi, my name is Brad King. I'm just going to kind of go through the self-introduction that's here. My history of living in Gustavus, I've been here going on five years now. What motivated me to run for the City Council? I believe, have always been taught and believed that it's a civic responsibility of every citizen to take part in the government that they are working under. What specific skills and training and knowledge would I bring to the City Council? I'm going to say that this is my first foray into any kind of elected office. So there's no particular knowledge of past offices that I have. I've spent my career as a teacher and as an administrator. My area of expertise in teaching was constitutional law, government, and U.S. history. Training, multiple degrees in college. I guess that's good training for learning how to do some things, and I appreciate that. What do I believe are the most pressing issues facing our community? I think there's some infrastructure issues, as we've experienced, all of us have experienced in the last couple of days, I'm sure, and some issues related to just unifying our community in a way so that every person's voice is heard, and not limiting that. And what would I like to accomplish while serving on the City Council? I would like to accomplish anything that helps keep Gustavus as great as it is and make it better.
Thank you so much. Good. Okay, so now we'll hear from Shelley.
I'm Shelley Owens, running as a write-in candidate for Council C. D. I was asked to run for the underposed position. I think it's important for voters to have a balance of choices. I moved to Juneau from Anchorage and came to Gustavus to kayak in camp. I bought Mary Kralovek's house in 2008 and came here seasonally until I moved over in 2016. I have a varied background, which has given me familiarity with law, government administration, and nonprofit organizations, including a legal background and a position in public health as a state EMS manager. I volunteered with a range of state and local boards and committees, including Capital City Fire Rescue, Juneau State Parks Advisory Board, Capital City Emergency Planning Committee, the Governor's Alaska Council on EMS, and as a KRNN radio host and doing Alaska Folk Festival sound production. In Gustavus, I volunteer as a fire department dispatcher, library volunteer, with Helping Hands Hospice Board of Directors, the Beat Parks Advisory Group, and I've served on the Gustavus City Council. A concern of mine is our rapid population growth and the ability of our human and environmental infrastructure to adapt to its challenges and changes. I want the council to return to meeting in public hall and public at City Hall and believe that correspondence from the public to the council and any reply to it should be posted on the city's website. I'm willing to find a way to do this without unburdening, really unburdening, burdening the city clerk. I have a statement. Gustavus is an exceptional community, and the wealth of the natural beauty and the diversity, talent, and self-sufficiency of its residents. Despite our personal and political differences, we managed to preserve tolerant relationships and mutual support for each other. It is my hope to preserve and enhance community respect for the beauty of our natural environment and each other. And I want to thank and commend the forum organizers for once again providing us with this opportunity to meet and discuss our ideas for how we can sustain and improve our unique community.
All right. Thank you so much. Janine Driscoll and Paul Zubay are running for seat B. First, we'll hear from Janine.
Hello, I'm Janine Driscoll. And first of all, I do want to thank all of you in the audience for coming to participate. I want to thank the organizers, and I also want to thank all of the people who are running, because I do think that active participation is a really important thing for this community. And I want to thank all the past and present City Council members. And I recognize the vast amount of volunteer time and work that it requires to be a City Council member. So I've lived in Gustavus full-time since 2000. I first came to Gustavus in 1984, when I worked for Southeast Regional Resource Center, and I provided speech and language services here. And then I hung out here in the summers, because I hung out with Rusty Yerxa. And then in 2000, I moved here full-time, and I still live with him as well. So I've had a lot of interactions, though, with the City Council. But you know, it's always been from what I am now calling "the other side of the table." So when I first came here, I got talked into by Kim Nay to volunteer at the DRC, to be able to turn the community's food waste into compost. And we did it with a pitchfork. And so I realized, there's got to be a better way. So what I did was, I then volunteered on the committee, on the DRC committee, and I ended up writing all of the grants that now funded the community's compost program that we have now. I funded, wrote the grants by working with the City Council for the glass crusher and a whole host of other things that are used at the DRC now. Then I had more interactions with the council, when in 2008, Judy Brakel and I both realized that we needed to have a community garden. And so we started to look around town, and we learned that the city had just received some land that could be used as a garden. So we petitioned to the council, and we received a special use permit for the Gustavus Community Gardens. And I'm still an active member of that and a co-chair of organizing the garden. Because early childhood education and quality childcare is a really important part of my life, I became a non-parent member of the Rookery Board for 10 years. And as a board member, I attended a lot of City Council meetings. And I am very grateful for all of the help and assistance that the city has given the Rookery. Now, the Rookery closed because of COVID. And then since then, the Chatham School District has taken on the responsibility of operating a preschool. And I'm very grateful for that. And I have just heard the news that the current clinic board is giving the clinic building to the Rookery. And so perhaps there'll be another opportunity for the daycare, the childcare, to happen, which is a huge, amazing, important part for the economy of this town. So but my most recent foray in front of the council was support for the root cellar. And so along with the other families that store garden produce there, I'm very grateful for the increased food security we have as a result of the city's support. So if elected to the council, I look forward to sitting on the other side of the table. And I realize that the council deals with a plethora of issues, and some of them, we don't all agree on. And so what I'm looking forward to is hearing the other side, and hearing other people's opinions, and to get your multiple input in a multiple ways. And I'm really hoping to be able to learn a lot from everyone about, more about this community. Thank you.
Paul, next to you.
Hi, my name is Paul Zubay, and I'm running for seat B. I moved up in Gustavus about 2017, August of 2017. And I did the dream every man has, is to move, you know, in Alaska, build a little cabin, and live in the woods. I like Gustavus, because it's a small community, and the people here are really nice. What got me into politics was, I just wanted to be part of the community and seeing the issues that Gustavus is facing right now with, you know, infrastructure, kind of like what Mr. King said, and other issues. I just, I want to be that person that tries to listen to the community and get things fixed that need to be fixed in town. And I came unprepared. I don't have a piece of paper in front of me to say what I want to say, but I just want to, I want to have the people of Gustavus, I want their voices heard in City Hall. And that's all I got to say.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Moving on to seat D, our first candidate is Brian Taylor, followed by Noel Faravod. Brian is currently away from Gustavus and is joining us via Zoom. So Brian, go ahead with your introduction.
All right. Well, I guess I should start by asking whether or not you can hear me.
Yes.
Is that yet?
Very well.
Okay, excellent. I hope I'm not just like booming through the speakers there. So my name's Brian Taylor, and my girlfriend Rachel and I came to Gustavus, sort of Gustavus. We worked at the lodge in 2019 and then moved into town officially right at the start of the pandemic, April 1st, 2020, and have been living in Gustavus ever since, although we try and get out for a month or two in winter if we can. My motivation for running is kind of because I've been asked by several people in the community if I would consider running every single year since I've been eligible to run. So I've been thinking about it for a while and really interested in getting to know the community a little bit better, getting into the community a little bit deeper. And, you know, as we're looking at buying a land, or some land or a house here, also expanding my knowledge of how local government works and kind of getting a more deep interface with the issues that Gustavus sees. Feel like I have some exposure to some of it, but certainly not to all of it. So it would be a learning opportunity for me on a lot of fronts, which would be really exciting. As far as skills and knowledge I'd bring to the council, I have personal and professional research in, or personal professional experience in research. I basically, right now, work solving complex problems with time constraints and parsing technical concepts for general audiences. So I basically do advanced technical troubleshooting for a living. My colleagues and I joke that we are professional Googlers, but a lot of that is reading research papers and technical documentation. I also consider myself really well-traveled, so have a lot of perspective on a number of issues, which may or may not be helpful on some things in Gustavus, but I think gives me some helpful context for a lot of things that I come across. And generally, I would say I have a curious mind. I'm really interested in getting to the nitty-gritty of why things are being done the way they are, and I'm not scared to push the envelope or play devil's advocate, even if it's just to better understand why we don't want to do something. So I'm pretty interested in getting to spend a little bit more time in the work sessions and the debate part of City Council. Those are meetings I have not attended very much of as a citizen here yet. I'd also say I'm ecologically minded. I spent two years working as an interpretive naturalist for the Park Service and think I have a pretty solid understanding of the ecology and natural history of Gustavus and Glacier Bay. As far as what I believe are the most pressing issues, it's hard to sort things into really specific categories, but I think one, I would almost group together, or PFAS and the floods, seem like a pretty big issue that we are all facing, and not sure if there's a quick and easy... 10 seconds, wow. Okay. Well, as far as what I'd like to accomplish, most of it is honestly probably just keeping the city running smoothly, considering it's a one-year term on the seat that I'm running for. But if I could see some scoping done on the bike path, or maybe some grant writing done there, that would be pretty awesome. Or maybe some local septic treatment options explored a little further, although I think some of that is on the capital improvement plan. Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much, Brian. Next, we'll hear from Noel.
Hi, everyone. I'm Noel Faravod. And most of you probably know me, because I work everywhere in town. But I'll give you a little background. I moved to Gustavus, my first summer here was 2009, and I came as an AmeriCorps volunteer and built the Negoon Berry Loop Trail, which I'm very proud of. And I fell in love with Gustavus. So I moved here, did another AmeriCorps term in 2011, and got the preschool playground about 80, 85% done, until we ran out of money. In 2012, I served on City Council. 2013, I was the vice mayor to Lou Taylor, or Lou, excuse me. And from 2011 to 2013, I served on the clinic board. In 2014, I became the city clerk slash city treasurer. I served until 2017. Served on the Gustavus Volunteer Fire Department from 2011 to 2014 as an EMT-2. As far as training and skills that I bring to the job, I understand the administrative end of City Council, and I understand the parliamentary end of City Council. I attended Alaska Governors Finance Officers Association Training for three years. I attended the Clerks Conference for three years while I was in that position. As I said, I work at local businesses, and you've probably all met me somewhere. So I didn't realize we were answering all these questions at first. So my motivation for City Council is representation for all Gustavians. That's what I'm here for. To my next page. Skills, training, and knowledge, I think I mentioned that earlier. Pressing issues, infrastructure, I think is a huge one. PFAS, Brian, I think that's a huge one. And also, I think, as far as the city, we need to work more within living in our financial means. I'm very concerned that a third of the city's budget is federal. Pilt is, you know, unreliable. National Forest Receipts is unreliable. And I'm concerned about that one-third of our pie and the dramatic increase in the city budget departments this year. So that's what my basic, going into this, what my basic concerns are. I'd be curious to hear what everybody else would like to have done. I think that's about all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Noel. So that concludes the candidate introduction. Let's leave the microphone in the middle, and we can pass it, leave the cord in the middle, I'm sorry. But go ahead and pass it on down. Yeah. We've got five people working one microphone, so we're all, we're all learning to share here. So that concludes the candidate introduction. Next, we move to audience questions. Each candidate has up to two minutes to answer a question. We'll have a warning when you reach the 10-second mark again. Since we have an online audience, as well as the audience here at the GCC, we ask that you identify yourself when you ask your question, so everyone can know who you are. You can ask a specific candidate to answer a question, or address it to all the candidates. So when you ask your question, say your name, let us know who your question is for, and then immediately ask your question. In-person audience members are going to step up to the microphone over there at the right of the stage. Online members, you let us know you have a question by clicking the raised hand icon on your screen. That enters you into a Zoom queue, and Nate will let you know when you come to the head of the queue. We're going to, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to toggle back and forth between in-person audience questions and Zoom audience questions, so that everybody gets a chance. We're going to start with a question from the GCC audience. So I'm asking for a brave volunteer with a really, you know, with a good question to make their way over to the microphone. Otherwise, we'll move on to a Zoom volunteer. Oh, look, someone's being brave. Thank you so much.
This is Sally McLaughlin with a question for all candidates. Over the last several years, the City Council has seen a lot of inconsistency in the, by people resigning and not filling out their full terms. And there's a variety of reasons for that. But my question is, what is your level of commitment to fulfilling your term? And if you have any ideas on how to encourage and respect and support each other so that this isn't a continuing problem? Thank you.
All right. So Brad, you're going to lead this off.
Okay.
And I've named you, but let's get in the habit of saying who we are, so the Zoom folks know who they're listening to.
Okay. This is Brad King. My commitment to it is, my commitment to anything is, you join the team, you stay on the team until you're finished playing. So I would say that my commitment is that I would definitely serve out the full term, barring any kind of change in life that I can't control. So, and I understand that those situations occur for people, but I would hope that all council members who are elected would come to the stage with the purpose of staying for the full term.
And this is Shelley Owens. I thank you for the question, Sally. I would commit to the full term. I think some of the problems have been COVID and the impact on the distances between council members. I think I've noticed sort of a lack of kind of bonding among members. I don't hear as much discussion of issues at the work sessions. And I think that being back together again is going to make, hopefully, we can all come back together again at City Hall, will make a difference in people being able to meld together. I think that I've always been a little concerned about the level of training for council members. I think the more that, and I'd like to see regular training sessions, because there's a lot, there's a lot to learn. And I think that that will probably be very helpful to new, as well as existing members, to have continuous training. That's all I have to say.
This is Janine Driscoll, and I definitely am making a commitment to being on the City Council if I'm elected for the next three years. And, you know, I know that there's going to be an amazingly steep learning curve. And so when I started thinking about joining the council, or running for the council, what I did was, I went on the website, and I started like, you know, mining the website. I'm trying to find out various answers and trying to understand the workings of the city more and listening to some of the City Council meetings. And I learned a whole lot of stuff I didn't know. And I'm going to really encourage everybody to go on the city's website. And I learned something about a Muni code that I didn't even know existed. And I found that there's a lot of good information there. And I also found that it was really hard to find the information. A lot of my questions, I couldn't find the answer to. A lot of things, I go, man, I saw that yesterday, now where was that? And so I think that one of the things that I'd like to see to make people want to stay more is to have the website and basic communications be a little bit easier. And I know that there's various constraints on how things need to be, but I think that there should be some type of a level of more transparency and an ease of finding the information, and I'm willing to work on that. I mean, I'd like to take a look at the website and say, okay, from a user's perspective of a community member, if I'm having problems, I bet everybody else does too. And so I think that the more information that we can get and having it be easily found and easily accessible in one portal, I think would go a long way for making all of our lives easier, for the committee people's lives easier, for the public as well. So I do think that getting information out. I think training, as Shelley mentioned, is really good. That was one of the questions I had as well, is what kind of training do we get? Because this is like amazing, as far as how difficult this job is, and I'm committed to be there. Okay, I'm committed to be there.
My name is Paul Zubay. And yes, if elected City Council, I would stay for the full three-year term. And as far as people leaving and quitting and not fulfilling their full terms, I don't know what exactly would cause that, but I'm sure division. And I just wish, as a community, you know, we could get all on the same page and, you know, for the betterment of the community as a whole. And just try to work together a little more, you know, to get things done.
All right. Now we're going to go to Brian Taylor on Zoom.
All right. Thanks. I appreciate you putting up with me digitally here. As far as time commitment goes, I will say I am running for the one-year seat on purpose. I have a full-time job and a part-time job. And definitely thought long and hard about whether or not it was even appropriate for me to be running for this additional commitment on top of that. But then thankfully, found a state resource available. It's essentially a primer for new City Council members. It gives a really thorough outline of the duties and responsibilities, and felt confident after reading that and talking to some of the former and current City Council members, as well as the mayor, about being able to meet the expectations and stay for the full term. Wouldn't be surprised to see myself run for another term if I feel like I'm able to be effective on the City Council after meeting out this full first year. As far as what causes the attrition that you're talking about, I think, gosh, the only example I can think of is Bella, who left this seat that I'm now running for. And I will say a few things. One, I'm kind of appreciative of having a one-year seat that I'm able to jump into without having to commit to three years. So I think you could potentially think of the opportunity that that creates for other people who might not have considered running for council, getting onto council, because you would not have me running if this was a three-year seat. And so specifically for younger people who might not be quite so settled in their life, because, you know, people move, get different jobs. As far as how to prevent that, seems that it's been pretty well addressed in a couple other statements here. But division certainly doesn't help when we have angry outbursts at the meetings. It definitely doesn't make it more fun to be a City Council member, so I can't imagine that that makes people want to stay longer. I guess that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Noel. And as I said before, I have previously served on council. Full disclosure, I was on a three-year term. I served two years of those terms, or two years of that term. But the reason I resigned from my seat was I was urged by my six other City Council members at the time to apply. But the reason I resigned from my seat was I was urged by my six other city council members at the time to apply for the city treasurer position. And I did, I was appointed and I resigned from my seat a year early with the council's blessing. You know, the one-year seat is a easily, I can commit to that. I have, as I said, four jobs. But I also have, uh, the knowledge that it takes to fulfill this appropriately for a year. I will say that, uh, people resigning, there are situations that out are out of your control. The flip side of that is we have a candidate sitting in the, uh, GCC tonight, who was the opposition for that seat, who really wanted to represent Gus Davis. And, um, you know, it's disappointing to see when people have to resign, I have to say. So I'm committed for a full year and, uh, getting people to stay, I don't know what to do. Commit to it.
All right. Now we're going to go to a Zoom question and, um, Shelley will answer first.
Here we have Leah.
Hi, my name is Leah Okin, and my question was actually to Mr. King. Is that acceptable to? Okay, I see the pass, the pass. Thank you.
You can ask a specific candidate a question. Yes.
Thank you. So the question is to Mr. King. You mentioned that a concern to Gus Davis was infrastructure. Actually, several of you mentioned this, but I'm just choosing, um, you for the question. So I'd like you to expand on what you foresee the infrastructure issues to be and how you may resolve those issues. Thank you.
The first, the first, Mr. Brad King, the first one I would say that I've noticed of recent is our, is our communications ability with telephone cell service, cell phone lines and so forth. I think it's, it's important for a community our size with our limitations because of our size, not to be out of connectivity with the world. Uh, and not being able to reach out to emergency services or things of that nature without, without fear of it not getting through. Uh, I think those things are critically important. Um, that's the first thing. As far as how to deal with that, I mean, I'd have to research it in depth to know how to deal with it. But I would like to see, I would like to see half of the town not to be in a cell service black hole. Um, I would also like to see, you know, some sort of, of system of communication with the outside of Gus Davis areas, particularly Juno and others, that doesn't go down on a regular basis. Another one that I, that I'm concerned about, of course, is our sewage and septic system problem. And I know that the city council has been working on that. From personal experience, I've been on the list three years to be pumped and it hasn't happened yet. And it concerns me considering the fact that most of our, our population drinks well water and things like that. That our sewage systems and our septic systems don't become a problem for us to be able to be healthy in our community. How to solve that one? I would like to work with whoever is presenting possibilities for septic onsite, septic tank care and things like that. And see what the city could do to make that happen for us.
Thank you. So we have time for a, uh, question from the GCC audience. Someone wants to step up and Shelley will answer, will lead off answering.
That's Susan Borner.
This is Susan Borner. I'd like to ask a follow-on, uh, infrastructure question, uh, what for all candidates? Sorry.
A little technical, hang on. Go ahead, Susan. Thank you.
Uh, infrastructure question for all candidates. What proactive steps would you advocate that the city council take to preserve year-long, fully functioning ferry service? And prevent Governor Dunlevy from privatizing and, um, defunding the Alaska Marine Highway System and replacing it with passenger-only service. Thank you.
Well, that's really stumped me, Susan. I think that, uh, that he hears, uh, from us a lot and, uh, the news seems to be improving, uh, on the ferry system. Uh, although we're kind of, I never really know how much support we have, uh, you know, in the state legislature. But, um, I feel pretty confident that we're going to keep, uh, keep getting on, getting on. That's not a real, I'd be interested in hearing your thoughts and ideas on this, but I guess you're not in the hot seat.
Uh, we've had a comment from an online listener. It's like everyone to speak a little closer to the microphone, so don't be afraid of it. Get up close and personal.
This is Janine. Is the ferry service is definitely a lifeline for Gus Davis. I think that one, you know, that is a really good question, and it's a question that I think most of the answers to these questions are, it lies within the community. The city council is just a very small group. We're just a small amount of people, whereas the city in itself is much larger. And I'm probably going to say this a lot, is that I really would hope that through the city council to get that answer is by going more out into the public and getting more information and ideas from them. And then that would be the city council's role is to take and combine all that information and then work with the city, work with other cities, work with the legislature, work with being an advocate for it. And so it's our way of communicating to a bigger, um, audience, which would be perhaps more to the, you know, legislatures and to get the information across to not only us, because we're talking to the choir, but to basically the rest of the state of Alaska, how the ferry service is basically our roads. And it's the same type of the thing that they have roads, we have a ferry. And I think it's the more that we can be an advocate for that and get that information out beyond Southeast Alaska. But somehow through the state legislatures and through a bigger picture, having our voice be heard throughout the state because we use the ferry service just the same way as they use the boats. Thank you.
Paul Zubay here, and, uh, that's a good question, Susan. I honestly don't know. A friend of mine at the coffee shop always said he wanted a road to go north and connect us with the rest of the highway system. I'm not going to name any names, but he's looking at me right now. Uh, other than that, um, I have no idea what to do, honestly. I'm not going to ramble on, but that is a good question. I'm not the one to answer it though. Aside from dig, building a road, which I don't want either, but, but if it came to that, I guess, you know, if it was between the ferry system and having a road, if we needed access here, I'd say build a road, even though I don't like roads. If that helps.
All right. Brian Taylor on Zoom.
Hi again. This is Brian Taylor. Thanks for your question. I agree that the year, the ferry service, kind of speaking generally, is a bit of a tricky issue. As evidenced by everyone not really having a solid answer for it. It seems kind of like a relationship that we need to continue to manage. And I would like to see us figure out a way to get it to be less fickle so that the whims of one single governor couldn't derail our service for months at a time. But honestly, one thing that I think is a kind of a pressing issue and related to this is maybe our over-reliance on the state ferry system. And I think that we could address our concerns about the ferry system disconnecting us by managing more of our needs here in town. That kind of gets back to, I mean, obviously that's not going to get you and your car in and out of Juno. Um, but I think that we can mitigate some of the issues that an unreliable ferry causes by serving more of our needs here in town, specifically like septic pumping. You know, if we aren't having to worry about that on the ferry. But yeah, for, for a solution on that one, that's a tough one. Seems kind of like relation, relationship management, I would say. And open to ideas as everyone else seems to be. That's all I got.
Thank you so much.
Hi, everybody. It's Noel. Um, I don't have a great answer for this either. I know that we are reliant on the ferry system, but personally, I haven't been on the ferry in a couple of years. But our ferries bring the groceries to Toshco and they bring the, you know, the barges bring the fuel, I guess. But they bring everything that we need here and people do go back and forth for doctor's appointments. I actually agree with Janine. It's, uh, not just on the city council. It's, you know, full-on community involvement because they, the Marine Highway System is always asking for comments. And, um, you know, the community should definitely be involved in that. So I don't really have a great answer. That's all I have.
Right. Let's go to a Zoom question.
None of our 25 Zoom participants have raised their hands right now.
Yes, I, I can hint myself because I'm, we're, we're rotating through the order. I do apologize, Mr. King.
This is Brad King. Uh, this actually comes close to home for me, both at the school and personally. But, uh, the ferry question is, is pretty deep. But I think the, the problem here is that, um, I mean, I applied to be on the ferry advisory board when they had the applications out there. And I was really disappointed with the fact that not a single person appointed to the ferry board has ferry service to their community. It didn't really make a whole lot of sense to me. They're not asking the people who need the ferry. So to me, that was, that was kind of a disappointment. But it, this is a, this is a situation, not just for Gus Davis, like everybody said, but every single community that has a ferry coming to it. And it's, it's a matter, of course, I think it would be good for all of the city councils to, that are on the ferry system to get together and have some discussions about why we're not considered worth keeping track of with the ferry. And I think that that's something I'd like to address, and I've addressed it with our representatives already multiple times. I'm sure that they're probably tired of hearing from me on that one, but that's okay. They can be tired of hearing from me. I will go ahead and do it anyway. Um, the ferry is a lifeline for not just us, but for every single Southeast community that's on it and every Southwest community that's on it. And, and to take it away is, I would like to ask the people in Anchorage and Fairbanks, do they want us to take away all their highways? If they, if they're okay with that, I guess we could do without a ferry. Thank you.
So Nate, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, nobody on Zoom has raised their hand.
Well, I'd like to take a moment and address our Zoom audience members. I can't believe no one out there has a question. And while it's wonderful that we have, uh, you know, the opportunity to do this online, we'd love some participation. So maybe take a moment and think about something you complained about or been upset about, and here's your chance to ask. And while we wait for that, we maybe have someone here in the GCC audience that would like to ask a question? Can you hobble up to the microphone? Well, we know we have 25 people on, on the system right now. Uh, different people have different computers and things are, you know, I don't understand it myself, but, um, we're going to, we're just kind of doing the best we can, but we know we have 25 people there who have made it on. And hopefully one of, two of them might have a question. We have a question now?
Yes, we do. Uh, Stacy, you are the next up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, I, this is a question for all council members. I apologize, I got on the meeting a little late, so I don't know if this has already been asked. But I am curious how you feel about the current, um, dock slash marine facilities out front as far as having enough space for boats, including commercial boats? And if you have any ideas or visions on how to improve that, where we could have some more permanent or safer places to tie up for longer periods of time? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with Janine.
Thank you, Stacy. And so I think that what you're asking is an incredibly good question. And I am going to say it's going to be an incredibly hard one to answer. And I think it has to do with a lot of the things that in our town are going to be hard questions to answer or hard, um, problems to solve. And it has a lot to do with basically the geography of where we are. And the virtue of the limitations of what the harbor has to offer. And a place, a safe harbor or safe place to put a boat is, is going to limit, you know, how many boats can be there. And so, but this is something that I am going to like say it out right-hand. I don't have much information about it. It's not something that I, I know much about. And I know that it is a big issue for a lot of people. And it is a topic that I would certainly be open to learning more about. But I will be the first one to, to admit, it's not something that I know much about. Other than to know that it's very, you know, the limitations we have based on the fact that it's not a protected place and that it's a hard place to put a boat that you can then, you know, leave and know that it's going to be in safe hands because of the, the water conditions, et cetera. And so I am just going to pass this on because I don't have much information about that.
Okay, Paul Zubay here, and, uh, this question actually, Stacy's question came up to me from a friend of mine too. I went fishing this summer, first time ever Halibut and harvesting bull kelp. And so we were in and out of the water, my friend and I. And, uh, with the time limits on the dock, the main dock where the ferry is, you know, you can't leave your boat too long or else, you know, it's frowned upon. And then the, having to come in and out of the Salmon River at high tide and the floats there are derelict. I mean, it looks like a hurricane hit that place, honestly. You know, if we have this many people that fish and have boats in this community, I think something should be done. I don't know if there's grant money that could be put towards new floats or more docks. I mean, I think that would be a good idea. I mean, I don't own a boat, but I mean, a lot of people here do. And I think that would be a good, good infra, infra, infrastructure to, uh, invest money into. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Brian Taylor on Zoom.
Howdy, Brian Taylor here. Um, I think that's a really good question, Stacy. As far as current dock situation, um, safer places to tie up. And I will say I am, off the top of my head, you know, don't have an answer to, to just magically solve what is obviously a complex problem. I think this gets into some of the, I don't know, points where you see, or where I have seen community members disagree on things where, you know, you, you could put in, or you could work towards putting in a nice, big, safe marina. And then you encourage another big wave of development and you kind of fundamentally change how Gus Davis is. Um, so it seems like an issue to approach very thoughtfully. Um, but based on, I think, the last city council meeting that I was attend, or that I attended, I, it sounds like this is something that's actively being discussed and explored as far as, I thought they were working with, I want to say it was a Corps of Engineers and looking at having like a protective sea wall put in and having some, some scoping done for that. I might have misheard their discussion and maybe it was something that they haven't fully, um, set into motion yet. But, um, this kind of gets back to my, my thought on, you know, my, my aim, or I guess my axe to grind getting into city council would be to, to learn as much as I could and to also just kind of support the good work that's already happening there. Cause it sounds like this is something that's, I guess, in what I have heard in the discussion on city council about this. Um, I felt like, sounded like they had some good ideas and were exploring them in ways that were very sensible. So, um, I'd be keen to jump into that and help them with what they're already doing. But thanks for the question.
Thank you.
Uh, hello, Noel here. And, um, I agree, it is, there's definitely not enough room for all the boats that are in Gus Davis down there. Um, it's dangerous down there in the summer with three boats tied side by side. Um, I saw a couple of accidents because it's very, very rough out there. A couple of boats, you know, hitting the dock when they came in this summer. Um, I don't know what's happening with seawall or breakwater, but I think we definitely need it down there. I don't think there's any way that we could turn this into a giant marina just because of the nature of where we live. It's too rough out there. But I'm not super knowledgeable on the subject, so, um, happy to learn more. That's all I have.
Get the mic down to Brad.
I'll be first to point to say, I don't have a boat, but I love to go fishing. And the problem that I see yours is exactly what everybody's saying. It's, it's very difficult for the boats to maneuver down there on the dock. It's very difficult for people to feel safe down there. And going up and down the river only at high tide is somewhat limiting, I guess you'd say. But the problem that I see is that, I, I think that there's a considerable number of people in Gus Davis that draw their living from fishing in one format or another. Um, and they And they contribute to the community in revenues and so forth and so on with that fishing, whether it be commercial or, or charter, or whatever the case may be. So I think considering their needs to be able to contribute to our, our city's coffers through revenues is something you have to consider. How we do that, there's 100,000 questions to that that I have no answer to. Being not, having been born in California and living most of my life in Arizona and Texas, I didn't spend a lot of time on the ocean, so it's, this is new for me. But I can see from like Stacy's question, I know that Stacy's family fishes, and that it's kind of part of their, it's their livelihood. And, and to not consider that as something we need to discuss and look at a solution to would be a, would be very disconcerting to me. So I think whatever the case may be, whether it's a breakwater like people have brought up here, or a safe harbor, or some other format of dealing with the situation to make it safe and, and useful to the community, I think we have to look at that.
Hi, Stacy, this is Shelley. I appreciate the question and know I don't have an answer. The Marine Facilities Committee, I think, has been looking at this for some time as well. But I suppose the comment that I thought most germane was, so what Noel said about, you know, just our geography down there, that it's unlikely that we would have a, you know, have a harbor or any other opportunity to have more boats there. But, you know, being a beneficiary, you know, of your, of your fish and being able to buy crab down there, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the problem. I just don't know that we have any solutions for it.
All right, now it's our local folks' turn, our in-person, if anyone has a question that they'd like to address. Making her way to the microphone.
This is Liz Vander Zandt, and I have a question that Shelley actually alluded to in her opening statement. And I would like to know how the rest of you feel about it. Would you be willing to look into and request that public emails and responses to those emails that come to the City Hall could be posted on a weekly basis on the, on the city's website? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, good question, Liz. Yeah, Paul Zubay here. I definitely think that that's a good idea, and I think the more transparent that the city council is with the residents of, you know, the rest of the people in Gustavus would be, the more, the more communication in between the residents and City Hall, I think it would be a good thing. Definitely.
All right, we'll ask Brian Taylor to speak on Zoom.
All right, yeah, this is Brian Taylor. That's a good question. I agree that it makes sense to maybe publicize one way or another what's being discussed between the community and city council. I think that's a good idea, and we should explore it. I'm not totally sold that publishing all of the communications between city council and the public members on the website is exactly the right solution. Mostly, as someone who manages websites for a living, once you add a new feature to a website, you then need to consider like the ongoing maintenance and administrative overhead of managing what could, you know, in the scope of two years, quickly turn into like a big unwieldy feature where like, how long do we maintain this before archiving it? Who's going to be making sure that this all goes on? Who's collecting? And like reformatting all these emails, and I know our city clerk already does plenty, so I would be wary of adding something to her plate or adding like another volunteer to our ranks to manage this. So that, that becomes the question for me, not saying we shouldn't have this openness in our communication, but how exactly does that get managed without unnecessarily increasing our administrative burden? But I'd be open to discussing a solution there because that, that certainly seems like a good thing to do. Thank you.
This is Noel, and I love that idea. I think there is, over the last several years, an erosion of trust within the community of the city council, and I think that would be a great way to address that total open transparency, is what I'm trying to say. Transparency would be great, and I would love to see all the council emails and all of the emails that the public sends to the council. I'd love to see every document that's submitted to the city, every petition. Everything should be online and available to everybody in Gustavus without having to go in and do a public records request. That's it.
I don't know what the volume of, of requests and emails and so forth are, and I can understand the technological limitations that might present themselves. But I also agree that that's a good idea. The more people know about what's going on in their community, the better they can react and, and talk to the people they need to talk to, to, to put in their input. If things are not transparent, if you don't know what's going on, or if it's hid from you for some reason, it makes it impossible for you to be a contributor. And, and it's important in our community, our size, that everyone contributes because we, we depend on each other so much. So I do believe that having as much transparency and open with all those public domain documents anyway is a great idea. Thank you.
And this is Shelley, and thank you, Liz. My thought about this was that people ought to be able to talk one-on-one with, with council members. But when it comes to sending a letter to the council, that that should somehow be posted. And I know there's, maybe we can use the news aspect of it. I'm not sure about, I'm not, I don't know. Like, I could appreciate, you know, Brian's help in figuring out the technology so we don't burden Karen. But in this community, we have very few ways of really communicating with each other and then passing and information off to each other. And one way, I mean, I'll write letters to the council, and Louis, bless his heart, you know, would respond once in a while. And even Mike, I call Mike. But it's, we need to have this dialogue among us all, I think. And one way of doing it is to see what's, you know, what communications are going on with the council and, and also to get replies. I think that perhaps, I like Noel's idea of having documents that arise in the city be posted. Maybe we could have a, a list, an inventory of what comes in. And, and we probably could use volunteers to help, to help with this process, and I'd be willing to do that.
All right, so now we're gonna, oh, Janine, this is the hardest part of my evening, is keeping track of you all.
We're playing, we, we should be playing musical chairs. If we all got up and then like moved over one and sat, and I said, in your seat, wouldn't be very much easier for you. All right, so, well, this is Janine, and I do really think that communication is a critical part of what the city could do to improve. And I really appreciate your question about asking that. I think that we need to look at the communication, not in a piecemeal type of thing, but to, maybe we have a, look at it as a whole, as to how is information being given? How is it being expressed? How is it being put out to others? And so in general, my answer to your question would be yes. I would like to see have the input, whether it's the community members' input that they send to the council, be somewhere available to the public. I think that that is a really good idea. In, I think that some way of getting it's maybe either summarized or kept in a, I don't know, in a database that you could then look at it in a strand, so you could see what was the communication on this issue. Because otherwise, if it's just by a date thing, you might not, you'd have to look through a million different documents to find what you want. And so I think in general, the answer is yes. I think it's one of those things that devilizes into details and how to do it to make it that it's very useful. And I think it's a good thing that we look, a good thing to be looking at to see how can we get more information and be more transparent and have that, so we know what people's comments are as we know what the response is from the council. And so one of the things that I did notice, though, is listening to some of the city council meetings, I find, I have no idea sometimes what they're talking about, and there's these past things, and you're like, well, really, what was that? And so I think there has to be some way to be able to fill in the blanks and so that these meetings are more meaningful to us. I did find out, this is just maybe an aside and not necessarily answering your questions, but all of the city council meetings, not only are, like, you can go on the web light, say, to read the agendas, they're all, the audio, you can listen to all of them, and you can turn it on two times as fast, and it's very interesting. And so, yes, but I, and so in answer to your question, I think it's good, but I'd like to see the details to make sure it was workable.
All right, now we're going to go to a Zoom question, and Brian Taylor, you're going to lead off.
Hey, there he is, our Zoom questioner.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me? Okay, um, so, um, my question is about COVID, which was, shall I say, a testy one in, in Gustavus. And there's volumes that could be said about it. But I guess on my own attempt to make it easy for you to answer is, or quick for you to answer is, what grade would you give the city and the city council on how they responded to COVID? Why? And if you'd like, what would you have done differently?
Right, we're gonna start off with Noel.
Oh, boy, I'm gonna go with C minus.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I'm so sorry.
Oh, shoot!
That's, that's okay. She can, she, she can finish now. She started, I think, if that's all right.
Go ahead and finish your answer. Never gonna go to Brian. I'm apologizing. This is a really hard part of it.
Yeah, with one of us missing in the game of musical chairs, it's hard.
I, I dreaded this part of it.
Go first next time.
Um, Noel, sorry.
This has been a very difficult few years. And I have to say, I don't think the city made it any easier. Um, you know, when I first moved here, it didn't matter what your political affiliation was. It didn't matter what your religious or non-religious views were. You know, it was unspoken that we all just took care of each other and cared about each other. And I feel like that has eroded, and it's starting to come back a little bit. And I really hope we rebound because this place is magical for that reason. But the division was palpable, and the city buildings being closed despite so many people petitioning and showing up and writing letters, you know, city buildings being closed is, is not okay, especially when the residents aren't okay with it, and that's why I'm, I'm on to you, Brian.
Okay, go ahead, Brian. I'm sorry.
That's, that's all right. I've never been a teacher, so it's hard to say on a grade. I might say about a B. I feel like the city definitely tried to give residents the flexibility to live within their varied opinions. I think that a lot of the discord we saw was because of the division that stems in the community. But I, and, and, I mean, it was pretty, pretty polarized to two far ends of the spectrum, so it's really hard to please both ends in that regard. I kind of agree, though, on closing the city buildings. It seems like there should have been some way to, to at least do limited hours or, I don't know, even like a walk-up window or something. It's, I mean, in context of how the rest of the world was doing as well. I mean, I was traveling to move to Gustavus at the start of the pandemic, and I remember that, you know, like even the, every public bathroom in Haynes was closed. And so, you know, there, there are little things that maybe we did better on that we didn't, or better on than we think or that we just don't realize. I will say, a high note for me, as far as the city's response to COVID was, in taking the, some of the relief funds and just distributing those to the, the residents directly as far as letting people self-manage and kind of trusting the residents to take care of themselves. I think that this kind of does get back to the division between, I guess, pull the polarization we've seen in town. And it seems like addressing the root causes of that, or at least like hoping to rebuild trust is kind of step one towards getting past a lot of what we saw as problems there. Thanks for the question, Larry.
Thank you.
This is Brad King. I'm having difficulty introducing myself every time I talk. I hope it doesn't become a habit for me. I'm gonna fall back on education. I'm gonna give it a no grade. I'm gonna tell you why that I feel that way. The reason I give it a no grade is because this is something that hasn't happened to our country or anybody for 100 years. And predicting a good response or a bad response or anything else like that would be nearly impossible. No one alive had any experience with it. So we had to kind of come from scratch. Now, I think the important thing to recognize is that when you do have no one who has experience with it, that you need to listen to everybody's opinions on it and, and kind of let everybody weigh in, not just leap to the first choice that you can come to. And I think that's, that's why I give it a no grade. Thank you.
This is Shelley, and I'd give the city an A. I think they started out and did as best as they could possibly do. And I think I was reading today that six and a half million people have died of COVID. And we have to remember that this started out without vaccine. There was, there was information, federal CDC, we know that they've, there's been some, you know, some criticism about CDC, but following federal guidelines, well-written resolutions, masking requirements. Unfortunately, people did, chose not to, not to wear masks. And so that, and, and there was a lot of illness going around, and so they were exposing other people to illness. The city has the obligation to protect the greatest number of people that it can through its public health mandates, I guess. And I think that people also have, have the obligation to protect themselves and protect others from illness to the extent that they can. Alternatives were provided for shopping, to help people shop, to, at the library. You could, you know, you could get your books outside of the library. Zoom meetings. I think that, that testing was freely available. Masks and gloves were available. I think the city, city did as good a job as it could possibly have done, and I commend them.
This is Janine, and I guess I would say the same thing as Shelley. I think the city did a really good job. And so what I would do, if we were sitting around in a circle, I would put the question back to the community and say, well, how did the community react to this? And that, I think, is an answer that then, of course, would have 600 and some responses because everyone did it a little differently. But it was something that we knew nothing about. It was very, very scary. If you talked, if you knew anybody or talked to people in New York City, when COVID was a very real thing and millions of people died, and it's, it still is a very real thing. And so the city didn't have a blueprint. They had nothing to follow. And I think they were following the science. I think we end up being here in Gustavus, a microcosm of the country as a whole. And the divisions that a country has, we have right here. And I think that the city did its best job that it could by trying to work on the information that was available and the science behind it. And I agree, they did everything they could. I think there were lots of options available, as Shelley mentioned, in terms of the library. They went out of their way to be able to have you do things where you could pick it up at the curbside, the same way, as she said, as the grocery store, as well as trying to make sure that the role of the city council was to try to keep us healthy. And so I, I think they did a good job, and I think it's all dependent upon ourselves to ask our, each one of us, how did we respond and what did we do to help our neighbor? What did we help to, to do to help our families? What did we help to do the community as a whole and the country as a whole? And I think the clinic needs to have an amazing, an amazing amount of kudos, as well as the fire department. They're still there now. If you want to go to get a COVID test, you can. I talked to people that I know in lots of places across the country, and getting a COVID test is impossible. And here, we just have to go get it. So I think we've all done, you know, they've done a good job, and I think we all need to ask ourselves, how did we react?
Here's the big one, huh? Where do I start? Well, when, when COVID started, nobody knew what was gonna go on, what was gonna happen, how many people were gonna die. Now we know it's gonna be with us forever. It's endemic. We need to deal with it. If a person wants to wear a mask, they can wear a mask. They want to get the shot, they can get the shot. If they don't want to get the shot, they should have that right not to get the shot. If they don't want to wear a mask, they should have that right to wear, not wear a mask. Shutting down city buildings, telling people they need to put a face mask on to go into a city building, I think that's wrong. Roe versus Wade got overturned, and people are shouting, "My body, my choice." What about when you go into a building, "My body, my choice"? That doesn't apply there. That's all I gotta say.
All right, now I'm almost afraid to say this, but I think we go to a zoom question. And I think Brian Taylor goes first. Make up for his.
No zoom hands up at this time.
Oh, I'm. My assistant didn't get it either. I feel so much better now. Okay. Let's go. Do we have a question here in the GCC and in-person question? Go ahead. Okay, anyone else want to step up? We have plenty of time. Well, no, why don't we go ahead with you, Sally? And when you step up there, please try to speak as loud, as loud as you can and close to the microphone. We've had a comment on the telephone that it's difficult to hear you.
This is Sally McLaughlin. My question is, let's see, the last year or so, there's been a real falling off of public participation in city council meetings. And of course, there's a lot of reasons for that. But my question for you, I've heard a lot of you say that you want to hear from, you know, and represent people from, you know, all walks of life and everybody's different opinions. So what thoughts do you have to bring the, raise the level of public participation? And to reach out to those people that you might not hear from and that might not be, have the same opinions you have on the issues?
All right, this is Brian. Thanks for your question. I think that's a good one. There's kind of a catch 22 here because I've attended a couple of city council meetings in person and it, I can see almost like a dread that hangs in the air with how procedural the meetings can be when you start having public comment on every single issue. It quickly turns into a five-hour-long meeting. And I think one big way we could get more public participation and cut through that dread might be to figure out a way to cut down on the like rote parliamentary procedure that seems like it's a little dated and maybe isn't totally necessary. If we can, you know, make it so that you don't feel like you're burdening the city council by making them go through a five-hour meeting so that you can, you know, jump in at exactly the right time when you're given them. Anyway, so that's, that's one thing that kind of stands out to me as a, an option. As far as encouraging people who disagree with you to, to provide their opinion, that's, that's gets a little bit trickier. That's, you know, that gets to be. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if I have a good answer on that one. Certainly open to it. It's, but I don't know if I have a perfect prescription for how to get people who dissent to my opinions to come contact me about it. I guess just being open, making it clear that I am open. But I'll think about that. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is Noel, and I agree that having efficient meetings is would be a big key to having more public participation. If I knew that a meeting was gonna be over in, say, an hour and a half or two hours, I'd be there every time. But that actually relies on the council and the mayor being, you know, having efficient work sessions and having the meeting lined out ahead of time. As far as speaking to people who have different opinions, why speak to people all day long at the post office or at the fireweed or at Toshco, reaching out to people that I may not see? Boy, that's a hard one because I work a lot. Mostly for me, it's just networking with people that I bumped in bump into and I start a conversation or they start a conversation or email. But I'm open to talking to everybody. So as far as a good plan to do that, I don't know. I don't have that answer. That's all.
This is Brad King. I understand the procedural problem there and the way that that kind of meetings can drone on for hours and hours, sometimes weighed down in the procedures. I think part of the reason people don't participate in meetings is if they don't feel like their voice is ever gonna get heard. Or that no one's listening. So it's important, I think, since we do live in a representative democracy, that everybody feels represented, that they have, they feel that everybody that is in the position, whether they voted for them or not, still represents them. And they need to be heard by that person. So I think the open conversation needs to happen. And the people need to be able to make comments at the meetings as often as much as they want to so that their, their words are heard. And the debate between people of different opinions, I am, I welcome any kind of debate on whether it's, whether I agree or not. I love to hear somebody else's opinion because, hey, I might just be wrong and I'm okay with that. And I'd sure love to hear somebody else's opinion so that I can determine whether I have got all the facts or not. So I think in a, in a meeting like, like a city council meeting, every person's voice is important and should be heard.
And this is Shelley. And I'm not real sure that I understand that dropping off of public participation that Sally, you were talking about. I no longer can get on Zoom because of the buffering, so I listen in on the phone. But when I could get on Zoom, it looked like there were always, you know, 20, as many as 40 people attending, which is a whole lot more than would attend in city hall. We haven't had city hall public meetings for a while, so I'm not sure how many people would show up. I like the, I, I'm hoping that we could continue the Zoom hybrid meetings so that people can at least listen in, if not participate. But another idea I had was that I've been trying to remember the name of the meetings that we would have, we would have a community-wide meeting on a particular subject like strategic planning. And I think those are good events where people would come in and circle and, you know, leave stickers and make their comments. And then we'd write them up and review them. Other ways that people can involve, be involved, and we can involve them because there is such a resource of talent in this community is to engage people in committees and work groups and bring, bring them. I would like to see more active involvement with the community through these groups where we reach out to them and ask for their expertise. And that's all that I have on that.
This is Janine, and I do, you know, agree with everyone that more active participation is a good thing. I think, again, that the Zoom has been a wonderful thing to be able to have the come into your living room and you can knit or eat dinner or what you like and be listening. But one of the things I think specifically to get more involved is.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's happening. It looks like they're connected.
It looks like Brittany's Zoom session is still muted, so we can't hear any of the mic stuff that's happening in the GCC.
Hang on for one second.
It looks like there's no working.
We are. Okay, so now we're up and fully running onto Zoom?
Yes.
Wonderful. Go, please. Thank you so much for repeating your question.
Brian, my question was if you have any issues about when you look at the budget for the city currently and in recent past, and also your position on increasing taxes, whether it's sales tax or property tax.
Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Okay. Well, I'll start by saying I have not been super familiar with the budget previously. And not having operated at this level, I'm just before this forum, I took a moment to peruse through the budget. And it's, it's hard for me to, I mean, I think we're sitting at like three point something million dollars. And I read that as a layperson, and that's, you know, several times more than I'll ever stand to make in my life. So I'm getting on to city council certainly will be a jump to learning to manage larger numbers and doing that well. I also think that with a lot of the programs or federal grant money that's being made available, it certainly seems like there's time and place to spend more than we're making if that turns into getting much more in federal funding for some of the things that we would like to see done here, like newer DRC facilities, et cetera. As far as increasing taxes to increase our revenue, I don't know if that's gonna land very well. And I think that's something that I would want to get really thorough public comment on. I'm, I'm certainly, even if I were an elected city council person, I don't feel like I would, at where I am right now, have enough authority at all to just mandate a tax increase. That, that's one that I would really want to do some kind of explicit public outreach to get more public insight on. And then to explore whether there might be some alternative way that we could generate more revenue for the city that doesn't have to take it out of the residents' pockets. One that I've daydreamed about, but it would be a whole huge project in its own sense is taking unused power that gets generated from the hydro and turning that into green hydrogen and then selling that to market or potentially using it for, you know, instead of diesel in the winters. But yeah, that, that could, that's a potential untapped source of revenue that the city hasn't even considered, to my knowledge, but obviously would be a huge thing. We've all seen how difficult the entertie is. But yeah, that's, I think that elucidates my thoughts on that a little bit. Thanks for the question.
Keep going.
Oh, I wanted them to take care of it. That's why I voted G and something like that. But that's not fair. And we complain and we get on the warpath. And, and if I don't go to the meetings, how do I know what they're actually doing? How can I complain to them or ask them to change their ways if I'm not there? So we have to go to meetings. We have to do it. I prefer personal meetings where I can talk to you personally or see you talk, see your eyes, see your mouth, see your movements. I do prefer that. And so I like having a nice, comfortable city office and beautiful tables and furniture that we can all sit around. But then COVID came in and then a lot of people, or it was decided to put in Zoom, to put in Zoom. Well, I don't enjoy it, but more people participated Zoom that wouldn't come to the meeting. They were listening to it on whatever they're listening to. So I can't complain about that really. I grumble a little bit, but I, I really, okay. Zoom is good. We already spent the money on it, all this equipment. It does help people participate and that's good. I do encourage each of the council members to talk to each other. Now, I'm not with them all the time, but it seems like they don't. You don't hear them talk to each other at city meetings. I, I just encourage you to talk to each other because you have different ideas and work through them for us all. I also encourage, and it's been brought up a little bit, simplify the meetings, simplify the rules of the road, how you do the meeting, how you run the meeting. It's awfully hard to keep up with what's going on and to track how you got to that point. We're, we're not listening to any discussions, very little discussion. We go from a basic meet, a startup meeting to a final meeting. We don't know what's going on in between. I, I do encourage the rules again to be simplified. We're not New York City. Surely we can simplify the way the meetings are run and letting.
Just so we're aware, we're back online and we can hear everything. So maybe we could get back on track.
It's okay, Brian. We're, we're just finished. Oh, that's Kyle. Sorry, Kyle. We're just finishing up here. Go ahead, Leslie, finish up.
Again, simplifying the communications and letting people that come to the meetings that aren't city council, letting them maybe talk a little or now that will extend the length of the meeting. You gotta take that into effect. So we have to guide, you know, do some kind of guidelines there, but not as bad. You can't get a word in edgewise at those meetings.
So Leslie, thank you so much. And well, can you, can you just kind of finish it up and, and we can get back to a couple of questions?
Okay. And oh, the other thing is the rule when you make an order that you pass a bill or whatever you want to call it on, they're very complicated, very intricate. And, and I know legalise, you have to, you have lawyers, we even have lawyers now. That's all important and everything, but.
Thank you, Leslie, so much. We really appreciate your words. So are we back online? Do we have a question? Okay, let's hear from someone in the Zoom world. Thank you for sticking with us.
Mariah, you have been very patient. It's your turn. You'll have to unmute. Mariah's not unmuting.
Is there a second one that we could go to?
Mariah's gonna need her hand up.
Well, so I think I'm broadcasting. So Mariah, if you hear this, you need to unmute your computer and then we can get to your question. No, that something's not working for us, but.
Oh. You just lowered her hand.
Maybe she's changed. She got too tired. All right, so we can go back to someone here in the building if, if someone has a question. I'm kind of looking at Nate, who's staring at his screen intently. No. Okay, well, um, we do have a few more minutes. And but if we don't have any questions here and we're not able to get questions online, I think we might just call it a little early, which is always fine. You know, what's most important is that we, we make the time available and people use it as they will. So I'm just gonna go on with this now. We've come to the end of our time this evening, and I want to extend a thank you to each of the candidates for attending and to all the people who asked their questions here in the building and also on Zoom. I know we probably haven't been able to cover all the subjects Gustavus voters are interested in. If you still have questions for the candidates, please consider contacting them directly to get the information you need before election day. Again, I want to say a special thanks to our volunteer tech support folks, Nate, Brian and Justin. And thank you all for, you know, giving it your best shot. And, and I am sorry that it didn't quite stick with us all the way through, but we're always working our way through this and doing the very best we can. Our folks here worked hard to learn the new sound system at the GCC and also Brittany, the operation managers on staff here. I really appreciate her support here this evening. They've given their time and worked hard to make this evening a success. So in closing, remember Tuesday, October 4th is election day. The community center is our polling place and the polls are open from 7:30 a.m. until 8 p.m. The last day for in-person absentee voting at city hall is Monday, October 3rd, from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. If you are unable to physically get to a polling place and need assistance voting, call city hall. They will help you. In our community, your vote truly counts. It's important that we all get out and vote on election day, October 4th. Thank you again for joining the 2020 Gustavus City Council Candidate Forum and good night to you all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Leslie.